Good evening, Brian. I believe we have started officially, so I will, I'm the, the league representative that does the introduction part. And although I missed the training session, I see we have our timer here, and so we are ready to begin. Uh, good evening and welcome to our forum for the Kansas City, Missouri City Council, Fourth District at Large Primary Election. This forum is sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Kansas City, Jackson, Clay, and Platt Counties, and the local Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Social Justice Committees. I am Anitra Steele, and I am a member of this league. The League of Women Voters is a nonprofit organization, nonpartisan organization. We're also nonprofit. We neither support nor oppose candidates or parties. Our mission is to empower voters and to defend our democracy. We envision a democracy where every citizen has the knowledge, the right, the desire, and the confidence to participate. Our membership is open to everyone. I'd like for you all to know that the other league members volunteering with me, Lisa Albright is our timekeeper, and our Zoom is monitored by Janelle Shu. I am the forums leader of the forums administration team, but it takes a team to run a forum, believe me. The public has sent in the questions via the league's website, L W V K C dot org. Tonight, we welcome Brian Ellison, K C U R, host and contributor to the K C U R, eighty-nine point three is our guest moderator. Welcome, Brian, and I'll let you unmute yourself, and I will turn it over to you. I'm so glad you're here.
Thank you so much, Anitra. It is my pleasure and privilege to be part of tonight's event, tonight's candidate forum, where we are learning about five candidates for the Kansas City Council on the April fourth ballot. Uh, as our viewers no doubt know, uh, the city is divided into six districts with two council members from each district, one who is elected just by that district and the other chosen at large by all of the city's voters. That makes for a total of twelve council members plus the mayor. Every voter in Kansas City votes for the mayor and for seven council members, their own in district council member, and then the six at large. Tonight's forum is for the at-large District Four candidates, so all of the city's voters will vote uh in this race. District four, as uh you may know, includes parts of Clay County, including Briar Cliff, the area north of North Kansas City. It includes the downtown airport, the River Market, East Bottoms, much of the historic northeast, section of the city bounded mostly by the river on the north and the state line on the west, and Campbell and Truce on the east, and a zigzagging line down to Forty-third and Cleaver uh on the south, which also includes my house. Uh, the forum, this forum tonight will last approximately ninety minutes. I'll ask every candidate uh to answer the same question selected from those submitted by the public uh to the League of Women Voters, along with a few of my own. The order of candidate responses will be determined by a random rotation, and I will I will say who's going to answer first uh each question before I read it, so that you have at least a little time to prepare. Let me first introduce the five candidates who are participating in tonight's forum in this District Four at-large race. All five uh candidates are here tonight, which is great. Uh, Jessica Bluebaugh, welcome to you. Grace Cabrera, welcome to you. John DiCapo, uh, whose video unfortunately is not working tonight, but is with us by audio. Uh, Crispin Ray is here. Welcome, and Justin Short, welcome to you. The forum is being recorded and will be available on the league's webpage, L W V K C dot org. All right, well, let's get started. Remember, you have ninety seconds to answer each question, and please do uh pay attention to those time limits and get in as many questions as possible. The first question will go uh first to uh John DiCapo. And the question is, please introduce yourself uh and tell us a bit about your background, uh, your education and experience that qualifies you for the office of City Council. Uh, so uh we won't start the clock yet. The clock should start with their answer, not with my question.
Well, uh, my name is John DiCapo, and
John, just a second. I want to make sure that the timing is correct.
Okay.
Lisa, if you can start the timer over. Hey, I'm, I'm sorry about that, John. I just want to make sure we're being fair to you and to all the candidates, so
No problem, no problem, Brian.
And if someone from the league who is still
Lisa, um, can you reset the timer? There may not be um an ability to reset the timer. Thank you, Brian, for bringing up that
They'll want to be able to reset it because the, you don't have to use all of your time, and I want folks to be able to not use all of their time, so.
Right. So Lisa, just make sure the timer starts when the candidates start speaking. Thank you.
So uh again, the question is, please introduce yourself.
You guys hear me?
Yes, we can now.
Okay, I don't know what happened. It, it disappeared, so I'm trying to find it again. I apologize.
Should we wait, or do you want to just time um some other way? We're seeing it. We're seeing this, your timer screen.
Uh, yes, but the ninety, the one minute, the ninety-second one is gone. Oh, boy.
All right, so uh Lisa, I'm going to go ahead and keep time on my phone until you, we get that figured out. So for the first question, I'll keep time. Uh, it'll be ninety seconds. Again, the question is, please introduce yourself. Tell us about how your background, education, and experience qualify you for the office of City Council, Mr. DiCapo.
Okay, well, I'm uh born and raised in Kansas City, um, grew up in the northeast area, went to Northeast High School, Penn Valley Community College, and the University of Missouri at Columbia and U N K C. That's my educational background. Um, my business experience, I grew up at the family restaurant, The Italian Gardens, which was a a landmark in Kansas City, was downtown for eighty years. And um I spent twenty-five years uh at The Gardens in the restaurant business and uh met a lot of interesting people at the restaurant. In the last twenty-two years, I've owned my own small business, DiCapo Foods, which made uh a, a bunch of different products like Jim's Tamales and uh DiCapo's Cookies, and I own a small pizzeria. Um, what qualifies me to be a council person is um I've been a successful small businessman all my life. Um, I've, I've always paid my bills. I've always paid all my loans off. I know how to make money. I know how to save money, and I know how to watch how, where the money goes. And I think that's a problem with our current city uh government. Uh, I think we need to keep a closer eye on, on where the taxpayers' money is going and make sure that all of it is used properly. I think that experience and, and my education and, and my forty-five years of being a small businessman qualifies me to be a city council person in Kansas City, Missouri.
Thank you, Mr. DiCapo. Uh, next is Jess Bluebaugh.
Yeah, hi, everybody. Um, so I um, I've spent twenty years in the nonprofit sector, working for organizations that, that specialize and, and focus on educational equity, um, advocating for the lives of girls and women in sports and Title IX, um, specifically here in Kansas City, focused in our tourism space and um spoke focusing on, on the driving economic impact through sports. So that cadre of experience combined with my education background, um, I have an undergraduate degree from K U in Communications and a graduate degree from Rockhurst in organizational development and leadership. Um, you know, I, I grew up, uh, the roots of that I came from really grounded me in the space of understanding the value of hard work and the value of teamwork, grew up playing sports um and primarily team sports. So I understand uh that there's a time to lead, and there's also a time to follow and support. Um, and I think all of that combined is what makes me a different type of candidate. We need a different style of leader in City Hall right now. And uh we need leaders who are willing to look to their left, look to their right, uh, ask for help, listen, and act in ways that are driven around um creative and smart policy uh that's driving solutions to our biggest issues. That's really what I feel like can bring a different to the table.
Thank you. Next is Grace Cabrera.
Hello, everyone. My name is Grecia. You may call me Grace Cabrera. Um, I was born in Cuba, and uh my family and I were persecuted over um our ideas. Um, as you know, Cuba is a, a very oppressive regime, and there's a lot of political prisoners. My dad ended up being one of them. I had to grow up very quickly uh over there. Uh, there was a lot of uh basic necessities. And so we struggled until we came here. Uh, we were given asylum uh in the U S. I was eleven years old, and I came straight to the northeast uh as a political refugee. Um, I graduated high school. Um, I also spent some years in uh northeast and started working right away in nonprofits uh in healthcare. And um I got to, uh, I got plenty of experience through s- several promotions, uh supervising call centers, patient experience coordination, um, uh administrative assistant. I got to um be an executive assistant, and so I spent many years in um in healthcare. What uh qualifies me um to be a candidate is that I am very in tune with all the problems that we're having in the area, and I uh make sure that I find out what the root causes are in order to fix them.
Thank you very much. Next is Crispin Ray.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Crispin Ray, uh, running for the Fourth District at Large. I think there are certainly different types of experience that you can bring to the table, and I believe that the um experience that I bring is very relevant to the serious challenges we are facing at this time in our city. Uh, crime and public safety, delivery of basic city services, accessibility to affordable housing. Um, you know, I grew up on the east side in a neighborhood that was impacted by disinvestment, generational, and concentrated poverty. From that experience, I grew an intimate understanding of those types of challenges, what it means to have vacant houses on your block, what it means to live in a neighborhood where you don't feel safe. Um, but in spite of all that, I had parents that worked hard to keep me out of trouble, so I went on to get an education that included a bachelor's degree in political science, a master's in public administration with an emphasis in urban affairs, and then my law degree from U N K C School of Law. Now, I've applied, I've applied all that experience in my professional career. Uh, from uh two thousand ten to two thousand fourteen, I served as a school board member for the Kansas City Public School Board. Prior to that, I worked at, at the city um in the mayor's office navigating the bureaucracy, and then for the last eight years, I've been an assistant prosecuting attorney on Jackson County Prosecutor's Office and the Special Victims Unit, where I prosecute those who commit domestic violence and sex crimes, uh unfortunately, mostly uh against women in our community. Uh, that's the relevant experience that I bring to the table.
Thank you. Finally, Justin Short.
Well, good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Justin Short. Uh, I was born and raised in the northland of Kansas City. I went to Park Hill South High School. Um, I attend, then I went off to the University of Missouri. Um, I got a degree in business and hospitality management. I also got a minor in mass communication, which is not surprising considering I spent the next seven years on a cruise ship as a, and worked my way up to, as to cruise director. Um, I always had my little apartment in Midtown. I was back and forth Kansas City all the time and able to watch Midtown transform. Um, I am now living downtown and managing a high-rise apartment building, uh which in and of itself is an, is a large amount of work. Um, I've served on three nonprofit boards throughout my life, Hillcrest Park County, the Harvest Ball Society, and the Salvation Army. Um, I was the different District Four representative for the L G B T Q Commission of Kansas City, appointed by Councilwoman Catherine Shields, Councilman Eric Bunch, and the mayor, uh Quinton Lucas. And I decided in two thousand twenty, it was time uh for me to run for an elected position, so I start, started uh laying the groundwork for that and having those conversations. Uh, what qualifies me for office uh is the fact that we are bringing a community-driven leadership platform uh to City Hall. It's time to bring the twenty-sixth floor of City Hall down into the sidewalks, down into the neighborhoods. We believe that very strongly. Um, so that is what we're looking forward to, and Kansas City is my home. It's my passion, and I would encourage everybody to stand tall, vote short, April fourth.
Thank you. All right, we're going to rotate the order with each question, so this first, this question will go first to uh Ms. Bluebaugh. We're going to talk about many issues tonight. So the first question I have is, what do you think is the number one issue facing Kansas City today? Your top priority, Ms. Bluebaugh?
Yeah, I mean, I think um I actually, I, I'm not going to um surmise that I know what the number one issue is. I think that when you talk to different people in our community, depending on where they live in our city, um, that the, the biggest issue varies to them. Um, I think that the three things that I hear come up most are basic city services like trash pickup and potholes getting filled. Um, but I also hear things like crime and public safety, and then I hear things like transportation um and, and affordable housing. So when you, when you think about where someone lives in this very vast geographical city that we live and the, and the varied um, the varied type of neighborhoods that we have and areas that we have, uh, I think, and then, and the investment in those areas or lack thereof, um, it directly impacts what somebody sees and experiences when they step out their front door. Um, and I, so I think for us uh as candidates and, and one of us as, as eventual City Councilperson, uh, it's not about us talking at people. It's not, and it's not about working for people. It's working with people and listening to what their number one issue is. Um, that lived experience and that uniqueness um is, is what's going to make uh the next City Councilperson in this seat the most effective. Uh, we have to listen to the people in this community, and their lived experience varies widely across our city.
Thank you. Uh, next is Mr. Ray.
As I've um engaged with voters, um knocked doors over the years, as I've read the citizen satisfaction surveys where the city surveys thousands of residents about what's important to them. Uh, I have heard a lot about public safety uh and the level of crime that we've experienced these last couple of years, uh which is not a surprise because two thousand twenty-two was our second deadliest year on record. Uh, you don't have to go that far back to find the deadliest year and the third deadliest year, so we've got a stretch uh that has been very violent. Uh, that's a lot of bloodshed, and that's a lot of trauma that impacts um specific communities, uh but it impacts us as an entire city. It makes it difficult to uh uh ensure that Kansas City is a safe place to do business and to raise a family. Uh, and so that's why that is my top priority, um in addition to, to housing, accessibility, and, and basic city services. But what I'm hearing most about is public safety, and so um I want to apply my experience to address that issue. Uh, I want us to adopt a evidence-based, uh comprehensive and cohesive public safety strategy, which we currently don't have at the city, and uh I want to make us the safest city in the United States.
Thank you. Next is Mr. DiCapo. And you are muted.
Are you there, Brian?
Yep, go ahead.
Well, uh, safety is a principal responsibility of city government, and I don't think we're providing that to the uh residents of our city. You know, crime, uh, as Crispin just said, crime is, is, i- i- the murder rate is, is, is off the charts in Kansas City. We're one of the biggest uh, uh, number one, two or three in this, in the country for murder rates for our size city. And I think the problem is that uh our, our police force, one, is, is, is not uh uh controlled by our, by Kansas City. Of course, it's controlled by the state. So I think that we have to get into the schools and get young people who want to be police officers, uh get them interested in becoming police officers and get them into the uh, get them into the uh, uh the academy and, and get them graduated and, 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 and put them back into the neighborhoods of where they come from and, and, and have a, a community relationship with the police department. And then once, once these police officers arrest people, uh, they need to be prosecuted by our prosecutors, and they need to be put in jail. I mean, the only way we're going to make our city safe is to get the criminals off the street, and the way to do it is prosecute them and put them in jail. And if they want, if, if they, if, if they want help, once they're in jail, be happy to help them. If not, just leave them there.
Thank you, Mr. Short.
So I, I'm gonna kind of piggyback on what Ms. Ray and, and what Ms. Bluebaugh actually said. It's, it's quite difficult to, to pin down one, one specific thing because we're talking to an entire city, and everybody's got different, different ideas. Uh, I think for us, though, community-driven development is going to be pretty important to us as we move forward in our city, and, and that relates to providing housing that's truly affordable at an A M I that is Kansas City-specific, not region-specific. We, we've done a great job at market-rate housing, but we have a duty to provide housing for those um who, uh, uh, all who seek housing, not just those who some, some deem worthy, but this also, de- development also relates to transportation. Transportation, is it on time? Is it on task? We've got some issues with headways, and we've got some issues with the way that we look at stops, particularly in the northland, that don't even, some of them don't even have benches. Um, so we have an, we have a duty to continue to build and enhance those procedures as well. But that also creates to, that also leads to creating an effective and developing a, a effective basic city service plan. Uh, we've got trash everywhere. There are solutions to that, particularly as it relates to the three percent sales tax on marijuana. A third of that is going to trash removal. Um, we, we've got potholes. We've got G O bonds from twenty-twenty-two and twenty-seventeen that are still being allocated. We need to make sure that we're doing what we promised the voters we would do in both of those ballot initiatives. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Cabrera.
Um, I, I believe that one of the biggest issues is crime. It's one of the things that pushed me to run. Um, uh, directly or indirectly, it's going to end up affecting the entire city, and it, and we're already seeing it. Um, I think that uh some of the decisions and directions that the city took during the pandemic uh helped incentivize um further crime. Um, so I think we need to uh take a look at that and um review what we could have done better and what we can do better moving forward um to help decrease the crime. I think we need to bring um the police and the communities together. Uh, programs like the Community Action Network, um, work. I have seen it work in some neighborhoods. I've seen an improvement. Those are the things that we need to um invest in um moving forward, but uh my next uh priority would be infrastructure as well. Um, I think there needs to be a um, a lot of focus on that as well.
Thank you. All right, the next question will be answered first by uh by Ms. Cabrera. In the last several years, uh, my colleagues here at K C U R have been reporting on the serious concerns being raised by tenants uh who are, who are organizing over rising rents in the Fourth District and indeed across the city. Homeowners have complained about rising property taxes, and those seeking to buy a home or condo are priced out of where they want their family to live. What policies would you pursue to keep housing affordable for people in Kansas City? Ms. Cabrera?
I, I want to target the uh foundational stuff so that we can um give a better standing to our residents. And by that, I mean uh focusing first on uh property taxes. The higher they go, the more homelessness we're going to create. So uh what do we need to do? We need to look at how uh we're raising um, how we're appraising uh the homes. Um, we shouldn't punish uh one person uh whose neighbor was uh overpaid for their homes. Um, those are the things that we need to take a look at. We need to change the way that we appraise homes. We need to uh change the, the way that we inspect homes, uh because uh I believe um a- absentee landlords uh have also become a problem. So there are several categories uh that we need to take a look at and address simultaneously. There are several processes in the city that we need to um modify to make them more effective. Um, we need to have consequences for absentee landlords who uh leave their properties in disarray so that uh it doesn't affect the rest of the neighborhoods.
Thank you. Next is Mr. DiCapo.
Well, um, you know, I think one thing is that uh when these developers come in and, and develop these apartment complexes and uh get tax incentives from the city, I, I think they should be required to provide some low-income housing. Uh, we've seen in the, just in the last few months, developers come in, get tax incentives from the city, build apartment complexes, and then flip them for big profits. That has to stop. Um, another thing that we've seen in, in, that I've, I've seen personally in, in South Kansas City is a lot of uh people who are buying these houses from out of state, and they're not keeping them up. And, and, and they're renting them to people for a lot of money, but they're not following what needs to happen as far as keeping their houses in, in, in good shape. They're, like Grace said, they're, they're out-of-state investors, and uh a woman drove me around South Kansas City, and she told me that a lot of the houses are owned by people that don't even live in Kansas City. And if, if, if that's the case, uh, we, we gotta get the codes administration out there to, to, to start charging these people for these code violations, and I think a lot of that would stop. Now, as far as the, the price
That's, I'm sorry, that's all the time for that question for you.
Okay.
Uh, next is Mr. Short.
You know, I think that um in two thousand twenty-two, when we passed the fifty million dollars for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, that was a really transformative way to look at the way that we provide truly affordable housing in our city. What it does is it allows developers to subsidize their own developments and pull down the rent rate for those apartments. Now, the qualifications to get that should be that you're using an A M I that is Kansas City, Missouri-specific, not of the region. Kansas City, Missouri, Missouri would put a one-bedroom apartment at five ninety to six hundred dollars per month. Uh, the region would put it at eleven hundred and seventy dollars a month. This is not affordable. The all, the other side to that coin is that it also allows single-family homeowners, uh, excuse me, home builders to, to access this as well. The average starting home um in Kansas City right now is a hundred, is three hundred and ninety thousand dollars, whereas it should be around the one seventy-five range. We have an option, and right now we're doing about twenty-two point five thousand per dwelling unit at, in the most recent examples of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and we can do it. The problem is it's going to run out, even with the fifty-million-dollar tranche, it's still going to run out. So it's our job as the next council to fund that into perpetuity so we can continue to bring down ta- um prices. As far as taxes, there's a great thing, three fifty-three, Westside just did it for property tax abasement. We should also be freezing property taxes with big developments.
Thank you. Ms. Bluebaugh?
Yeah, I, I'm actually going to go a little bit of a different direction with this. I think before we pass any more housing policy, we need a housing strategy. We need a citywide strategy that is comprehensive, that is district-based, that is proactively asserting and assessing what do we need in District One through District Six, in the types of housing that we need, and then we need to engage developers proactively with what we are coming to the table with as a city, um, and then engage them in the process of making that housing happen. Um, and then from there, we pass additional policy to help implement that strategy. Um, I think we need the smartest people around the table, building the smartest and most unique solutions, and housing, affordable housing is not something that we can singularly solve as a municipality. We don't talk about that enough. The federal government and the state have a role to play. We cannot shoulder the cost uh as a municipality to solve affordable housing on our own, so we have to walk and chew gum at the same time, and that's continuing to push at the state level and the federal level from the municipal perspective on where we need their support to help offset costs for these things, but we have to stop machine-gunning things around with no strategy. We are reactive to developers right now, and I think we have to flip the script on that. We're, we need to control the narrative and control the direction of what we're doing from a housing perspective, and building more housing um is, is what impacts not only affordable housing, but houselessness as well.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. Ray.
You know, one of Kansas City's strengths, one of Kansas City's greatest selling points historically is that it's an affordable place to raise a family. Unfortunately, if we don't fight, we're going to lose that. We're going to lose that at every level of the socioeconomic spectrum from folks who are living in poverty to middle-class families who have had an additional child, and that means an additional bedroom, and that means they got to move out of Kansas City because they can't afford that home in Waldo or in Midtown. So we've got to create an environment that creates more housing, that expands housing. Housing for seniors, housing for working families. You know, we have good tools at our disposal with the land bank that I think is underutilized. We've got to figure out how to make that a critical piece in all this with the Housing Trust Fund. We have to find a consistent and sustainable way to fund what we want to do with that, with that initiative. And one thing specifically that I want to see us do is when I was on the school board, 2014, we had about 1,200 families who were experiencing homelessness. A lot of these families were couch surfing, some were chronically homeless. I would like to see us promote developments where we are setting aside affordable housing that directly links families in our urban school districts with the wraparound services that can be provided by the school district. But that works with the school district and, and housing affordability units in our developments.
Right. Thank you. Next question will be answered first by Mr. Ray. And some of you touched on this in your answer, but not all of you, want to give all of you a chance to talk about it. Do you think Kansas City's current tax incentive policies are working? What guidelines would you adhere to in making tax increment financing or TIF decisions or other development incentive decisions? Mr. Ray.
Yeah, I have a pretty holistic view of how we've used incentives in Kansas City. Again, going back to when I was on the school board, you know, we were a taxing jurisdiction and district proponents and families were concerned about the diversion of property taxes from the district's finances. On the other hand, you know, I want us to build what we need to build. I want us to create an environment at the city where developers can come and you know, they know that the process is going to be streamlined, that the bureaucracy is going to ensure time uncertainty. And, you know, I think that in itself can be an incentive if we could just make City Hall work better. You know, I think we've got to look at these on a case-by-case basis. We have to prioritize mitigating the risk to the city for long-term projects. We've got to include neighborhood voices and folks that are going to be directly impacted by development in their neighborhood. And we've got to be proactive in setting aside, you know, what we want to prioritize, where we want developments to occur. For the longest time, had city council candidates and mayoral candidates year after year talking about we want to develop on the east side. And there's no development that happens on the east side. We've got to keep trying and we've got to prioritize that as a city council. And having grown up on the east side, that's something that I want to be a part of.
Thank you. Uh, next is Mr. Short.
Incentive reform is, is something, it, it's obviously, you know, a hot topic right now. And I think that the taxing jurisdictions, particularly as it relates to the school boards and the libraries, definitely have to have a, a role in this, you know? It also depends on where the TIF is, you know, the Shoal Creek TIF is, is a great example. It returns $31 for every dollar spent. You know, downtown, it's a little bit different, you know, because we're talking about Brownfield TIF versus, versus Greenfield TIF. And that does affect property taxes rather than sales tax. So, you know, the, the continuing to ensure that incentives are looked at with a fiscal note. If you're applying for incentives for Kansas City, Missouri, you have to have a fiscal note. And anything beyond what that note says is what you need, which is, which is what we would call the icing on the cake. I don't think, I don't think is appropriate, you know? And also, community engagement is really important here. There was an ordinance in January that would have taken away minor subdivision responses or community engagement to some incentive requests. And, and now that didn't end up passing, but we have to continue to listen to the community. And I also think we should have a pretty holistic development plan and incentivize what we want, where we want it. If you can build truly affordable housing in the third, fifth or second districts, then I'm going to, my incentive conversation is going to be very different than the next market rate luxury housing. So we need to look at all of those things holistically and come up with a plan.
Thank you. Ms. Cabrera.
I think we need to focus our incentives on things that are going to empower the, the residents of Kansas City. Things that are going to bring them out of poverty, things that are going to make for much higher salary, maybe some manufacturing. We definitely need development, but I think we can make better decisions that are going to put everyone at a much better place because if the city continues to to raise property taxes as a foundation, the, the rest of the programs or the rest of the departments that we make up are not going to have, they're not going to send much of a chance because who's going to keep pouring money into these things? So that's just an example of how we need to go to the root of things and empower the, the residents and put them at a much better position to, to have a chance to actually own property or, or just be able to raise their family.
Thank you. Mr. DiCapo.
Well, as I just said previously, there's been a couple of apartment complexes that have just sold for 10 or 15 million dollars in profits. And these incentives continue with the new owners. And I think these people have a good idea of how this works in Kansas City. And they go straight to City Hall and, and they buy up the, the city council people in one way or another to get these things done. You know, there's several agencies that offer incentives here in Kansas City, and I think we need to, to monitor these groups a little bit closer. You know, there's, we're, we're still paying $11 million in bonds for the Power and Light District. And they keep building bigger and bigger one, two, three lights. So these incentives that we're paying on these bonds, I just, the layman doesn't understand. If you're going to give incentives to people, give them for low-income housing. Don't, don't give them for this $1,800 apartment buildings. Incentives are good when, when, when the people can actually see them and use them and appreciate them. The, the average person.
Thank you. Finally, Ms. Blueba.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think we have to, to look at our entire ecosystem of incentives and reevaluate it. Incentives are one of many tools in our tool belt and we need to be able to use them, but they need to be evaluated. We are not the same city that we were 20 years ago. When I started my career at the Sports Commission, one of the very first things that I did as an intern there was standing on the steps of City Hall with a sign that said, Vote Yes on One, which was making downtown happen. And we had to give out incentives like they were Halloween candy because we needed to revitalize downtown. We are not the same city anymore, but at the same time, we have to continue to be able to use incentives as a tool to drive development and, but it needs to drive the, the kind of development that we want and need. And I think, I agree with Chrisman, we have to look at development projects as unique standalone projects. And passing policy and ordinance that like spreads a broad brush across all of developments and tries to fit all of it into one box takes our ability to negotiate and have flexibility around how we look at those away from us. I also think we have to learn and evolve, right? So the, the thing that John just said, in my mind, we learned a lot from what we did with the Cordish Company and with, with Power and Light. And we should take that and iterate and learn from it and evolve in how we're using incentives moving forward.
Thank you very much. We will now move to the next question, which will be answered first by Mr. Short. So you all live in the fourth district, the new fourth district, which is the only one that actually crosses two of the city's major lines of division, the Missouri River and Truist Avenue, although it's largely west of Truist. What efforts have you personally made in the past to reach out to your fellow citizens on the other side from you of the city's historic divides? Mr. Short.
So I am a member of the Northland Chamber and have been very active with that group. Also born and raised in the Northland. My father was a Platte County Commissioner. My mom ran a nonprofit organization in the Northland for 25 years, so deeply invested in the Northland. I'm continuously in the Northland, a part of, part of some other Northland groups, showing up to neighborhood meetings. One that comes to mind particularly is Maple Park. I, I really enjoy those meetings. They've got a wonderful group leader, Jeannie Walters. And, and, and those are, those are the things that are important to me, going to the neighborhood groups, going to the community groups, going to the town halls, particularly at NNI, because NNI is such a great example of what can be done when neighborhoods really organize in a given area. So that is that, you know, that is far, as far as the Northland goes, that's kind of where, how our focus has been. Now, for the part of the fourth district that is on that Truist divide side, we've spent a lot of time in that area, again, going to the third district meetings, going to the fifth district meetings, even though they're not part of the fourth district, those, those are the largely the areas in which the rest of the districts encompass. So continuing to get involved with those neighborhoods and those groups has, has been a priority of ours. And we have learned a lot from those groups and we've learned a lot about their challenges around the city. So we will continue to do that. Engagement is key.
Thank you, Ms. Cabrera.
So I did not make the decision to get into this, into politics until this last November. But I have focused a lot of my efforts into building community here in the Northeast. Starting community bike rides, engaging with the police to help build their Hispanic Police Academy. And being engaged just in general with the neighborhoods. But I have set some cultural events throughout the city, like the Crossroads City Market. And I do have a, a very good relationship with many local businesses. I can't remember anything else I've done.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Blueba.
Yeah, I mean, I, I have to say, Brian, it's not an effort for me to, to cross those lines. It's by virtue of the work that I do and have been doing for 20 years. I worked in the Sports Commission not once but twice, and we did youth programming just about every corner of, of our city. I got to serve kiddos in the, in the Northland and on the far east side of our city and the far south side of our city and in the heart of our city. And I went, I worked at Visit KC where my job was to promote everything that is cool, not only about Kansas City, but about our region. And that meant getting really proximate to, you know, neighborhoods and things that, that drive attraction and interest in, in various corners of our very large city. And I work at United Way right now as their Chief Philanthropy Officer. And so it is, it is my job to connect the philanthropic community that is, that is across our six-county region. But right here smack dab in Kansas City and serving the thousands of nonprofits that are doing really impactful work across our city. I currently live in Longfellow, so I live in a house that's in a neighborhood that's technically downtown. But before I lived there, I lived in Truistwood and, which is in the fifth, and I think it's still in the fifth. And, and so I feel like, you know, that's just by virtue of, of the, the work that I do every single day. And I, and I consider it a privilege to be able to go to every pocket of this community whenever I have the chance to.
Thank you. Mr. Ray.
Brian, I love this question. I'm glad you asked it. I don't know who came up with it, but I think it's a great question. We've had about a half a dozen of these forums and this is the first time a question like that has been asked. And I think it's so important because if you look at us as a region, Kansas City is the 17th most fractured region that takes into account jurisdictional lines between cities and counties, the river. It doesn't take into account the cultural barriers that we created that you mentioned, east of Truist, west of Truist. And so we've got a lot of work to do. You know, I grew up on the east side and so I was on that other side of Truist for the majority of my life. And, you know, my wife and I, we now live in Valentine, and before we lived in Valentine, we lived in Bradcliffe. I've worked north of the river. I've got my education north of the river. And so I've, I've sort of seen all sides of this and, you know, we need folks who can work to bridge those divides. When I worked in the mayor's office and when I served on the school board, you know, we passed policies that brought folks together. The district has a long history of segregation, a long history, and we're still healing from that. And we saw that, those challenges, you know, when we were trying to prioritize schools and school funding between those on one side of Truist versus the other, and we were, we, we did get some good work there. The fourth district represents all of these divisions and the person sitting in this seat is going to be able, is going to have to build that divide.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. DiCapo.
Well, I, I operate a business at 901 East 19th Street and right out my, my window is Truist. And the reason I got into the race and I, like Grace, got in late, I haven't been campaigning for the last year or two. I got entered Thanksgiving because a, a company called Mirrors closed my street from Truist to Campbell and put me out of business almost. I'm still fighting a little bit to get back in. But throughout my life, and I'm 64 years old, I've been all over Kansas City. I have a lot of brothers on the east side. I have a lot of relatives that moved from northeast in the Northland up, up into the Northland and a lot of good friends. My dad was the campaign manager for one of the city council members from the Northland, Dillingham. So we have a lot of relationships with people all over Kansas City. And as far as me being someone that can, can bring people together, I bring people together every day. Every day, Brian, people come into my restaurant, whether you're black, white, Mexican, whatever. Everybody sits at the same table. We all eat together.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. DiCapo, you'll answer this next question first. This also is a topic that some of you addressed earlier. Now you all get a chance. The homicide rate in Kansas City is on pace to be as high this year as last, near record levels. Other crime rates have also increased. What is keeping Kansas City from successfully lowering its crime rate? And what would you do about it as a member of the city council? Mr. DiCapo.
Well, I mean, we need more police officers and our police officers need to be paid the way the firemen are in Kansas City. I mean, if you're a fireman in Kansas City, you make a lot of money and you get respect. If you're a police officer, you barely make a living wage and, and half the people hate you. So we, we got to get more police officers. We got to get young people involved in, in being a police officer. We got to have them go, go through the, 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 the policies and, and the programs and, and learn how to be community developed. Now, my dad was on, we had the crime commission and he kept telling me, son, he said, we know who the criminals are. We just have to go get them and we have to prosecute them. And that's, that's a big problem in Kansas City is we're not prosecuting people. Where they get arrested, they come to, to, to put them in jail, a couple of days later, they're out committing crimes again. That needs to stop and it needs to stop now.
Thank you. Ms. Blueba.
Yeah, I think, I think we have to tackle crime and public safety in, in two-fold approach. I think we have to have a supported and accountable and collaborative police department that we have a relationship with as a city and as a community and are working cohesively at reacting to the crime. And on the flip side of that, police don't solve crimes, they react to them. So if we're going to disrupt and interrupt a crime before it happens, we have to go upstream. And that, that looks like engaging agencies and organizations that are working in the spaces that we know that attribute to folks making choices down the line that put them on a path to, to committing crimes. So that's interrupting and disrupting and servicing spaces like poverty and homelessness and mental illness and substance abuse. And working collaboratively with the organizations ahead of time to do that, that it's an ecosystem and they have to be working together. And that continuum of care has to happen. So we talk about wraparound services. It has to be connected to the work that the police officers are doing as well. And I think that, you know, there are other cities we can learn from that are doing really creative things, but we have to stop trying to drive a square peg into a round hole. And we've been trying to do the same things over and over and over and how we solve crime here. We have, it's time to do something different and we need different leadership to do that.
Mr. Ray.
We had 169 homicides last year. It's a lot of bloodshed, a lot of trauma in the community. I feel sometimes that we resign ourselves that to the fact that there's nothing we can do about this. And that couldn't be further from the truth. In 2014, we had 76 homicides. It was a 30% reduction from the year before. It was a 42-year low. And what we had that year was a, a public safety strategy, a crime prevention program called KC Nova. Now, we don't do that program anymore, but there were some important elements in that program. One, it was a strategy. It had cohesive parts that worked together. Two, it was comprehensive in that it included law enforcement, social service agencies, neighborhood folks, community activists, and everyone in between. And three, most importantly to me, it was evidence-based. It was based on a, on a, on a model called focus deterrence that cities across the country have used to reduce violence. I, I last week wrote a guest commentary for the Kansas City Star on this exact subject. The title of the article was Kansas City Needs Leaders to Break the Cycle of Crime. I'd encourage everyone to go read that article because it gives some more thoughts about my thoughts on this. They can't cram into 90 seconds. But the important takeaway is we need a strategy that has those important elements, that is comprehensive, that is cohesive, and that is evidence-based. And I'm going to fight like heck to make sure we have that strategy.
Thank you, Ms. Cabrera.
In addition to serious crimes, we need to address petty crimes, which goes against the environment the city created in the last couple of years. We also need to make sure that we have enough police presence. Police presence does deter crime. And we're under about 300 officers right now. Like I was said, we need to make sure that we engage the police officers with the community. And we need to pay them a lot better. We need to make sure that we are prosecuting crime and that there are consequences, that we have a proper jail to do so. And mental health calls, which is the majority of calls for the police right now, should be or, or can be answered by experts or people who are well aware and familiar with, with these cases so that people can receive proper help and not end up in a in, in a confrontation with a police officer who might potentially hurt them because the police doesn't know if, if this person is trying to kill them. So there's a lot of things like this that we need to take a look at and, and improve and definitely need to pay them better if we want better officers.
Thank you, and Mr. Short.
I believe in a strong public safety presence that relates to police, fire, EMS, et cetera. But we don't have to reinvent the wheel here. I mean, we have just passed the Casey Blueprint, which puts $30 million into crime prevention. It's $6.7 million over five years. It was done in Omaha and Omaha saw a 46% decrease in violent crimes in over the past, I think it was five years. And it was called, it was called the Omaha Blueprint. It was something very similar. And, and, and us instituting that here in Kansas City, which was passed by the council last week, is a way that we can look at additional ways of, of, of looking at crime in our city. I do believe that it is important to have a strong police presence. You know, I think a lot of people's concerns are response times. Sometimes if you're in South Kansas City and you're making a phone call, you might get somebody from North Patrol and it might take you 22 minutes to get there. This is a problem. We do need to incentivize our officers in terms of their payment. So I, I think that there are a lot of ways that we can address crime, but one of the biggest ways is we can invest in our blighted areas and best in communities that have been historically de-invested in is a great way to, you know, deter crime inherently. And there are studies that show this. So those are the ways, those are what we look forward to, to bringing to city council.
Thank you. Ms. Cabrera, you'll answer this next question first. The Kansas City Royals, as you may know, want to build a baseball stadium downtown, possibly in the fourth district. Do you support the stadium? Would you like to see it built? Would you support public financing for it? And if it happens, bringing increased home values, what would you do to reduce the impact of increased property taxes on long-term residents? Ms. Cabrera.
I think that we need to get the city involved in this decision. That's, that would be the ultimate representation. That's why I'm going into, into this and, and running for office. But I, I think that it should be up to the city. And, and then like I said, we need to take a look again at how we appraise properties. One, one million dollar home being constructed next to you should not affect the $150,000 home that has been there for a long time where families have been generational. We, we can do that and, and we should do that.
Thank you, Mr. Ray.
Can you repeat the question? I know it's about the Royals, but there is a, a second part of that that I want to make sure I heard you right on.
Do you support the stadium? Would you support public financing for it? And if it happens, increasing home values, would you, what would you do to reduce the impact of increased property taxes on long-term residents?
Okay, gotcha. Thank you for repeating that. You know, I'm a big Royals fan, grew up going to Coffin Stadium, got a lot of nostalgia wrapped up in that stadium, playing baseball. You know, I'm not sure what the ask of the city is going to be. I could speculate that it's going to be incentives. You know, I've heard a lot of folks say they expect it to be incentives for entertainment district. I don't know. And so it's hard to formulate an educated opinion, specifically an opinion that voters are going to hold you to. When we don't know what the plan is going to be, what the ask is going to be, heck, we don't even know the location yet. Today the news came out that they're exploring a location in Clay County. But I think what is important is that as this plan develops, we have folks on the city council that are going to balance mitigating the risk to the city's finances that are going to ensure that distressed communities are not disproportionately impacted. That we are working with the county. We need a stronger relationship with the county at so many levels. And this is going to be one place where we need to work with the county because that's where any freeze or policy impacting property taxes is going to be decided. And so those are going to be the things that I use to, to approach this. I will say, I do appreciate that the Royals are coming to this with good faith. You know, they're not starting off in a position like we see in other cities where they're saying, it was what we want, or we're going to move the franchise to another city across the country.
Thank you, Mr. Short.
So yes, I would absolutely be supportive of a downtown baseball, but you know, that is, that's a surface level answer. The, the question is, would you be supportive of downtown baseball stadium? Of course. It's cool, right? But is it the right project for Kansas City is the actual question. And how we get there is going to be our job. We have to, as leaders, separate fact from passion. People are passionate about a lot of things, but what is factual? And would I support public financing? If, if John Sherman comes to me and says, I want $700 million for this facility, that's going to be a hard pass. Now, if John Sherman wants some infrastructure support from the city and we can prove that that investment is going to come back to us, then yeah, I think I would support public financing, but not to the degree where we're paying for that facility. And certainly there are other in financing options that we can use in terms of an ETS, excuse me. In terms of ETS incentives, which would be economic activity incentives. So it only works if the stadium works, right? So there are other forms of, of public financing that can be used that don't necessarily come out of coffers. Minigate rising property taxes, working with the county to freeze or stair-step property taxes in a radius around a development like that, particularly a development that Kansas, of the size Kansas City has, has never seen, besides the airport that just opened. I think those are going to be really important conversations to have with the county and we have to fix that relationship with the county.
Thank you, Mr. DiCapo.
Well, I am totally against a downtown stadium. We've got a plan, the DiCapo Plan, which would build a monorail system from downtown to, to the Truman Sports Complex and back, similar to a monorail they have in Las Vegas. And, and the reason we would want to do that was, you know, that Truman Sports Complex out there. Everybody talked about the development that was going to happen around that once they built the complex and it never happened. But I think if we build a monorail that went back and forth along I-70, you, you've got easements there already right along the highway. Put a big Marriott Hotel out there, maybe an amphitheater and get some development for, for the east side of Kansas City. I mean, that, the east side of Kansas City has been, been shunned for, for years. And, and I think developing around the stadium, using the monorail going back and forth. People would stay out there, take the monorail downtown. I think downtown and the east side would both benefit from, from that plan.
Thank you, Ms. Blueba.
Yeah, I mean, I, I've spent a good chunk of my career working in the sports space, so I, I love the idea of a downtown stadium, provided that we have the details that we need to understand the specificity of the project, right? We need to understand the financing plan. We need to under, understand the infrastructure plan. And we need to know the location in order to know the impact on the area around it. I am, I am in support of, of projects like pub, public-private partnerships. I think that you know, there's a good example and a good battle that's happening in New York City right now, where I used to live with Madison Square Garden and Penn Station underneath it. And the amount of, of repair that is necessary for Penn Station. And that, that garden is owned by, it's entirely private owned. So there is a, there is a downside to having a privately, entirely privately owned facility. And I think there's value add in having that. But at the end of the day, the voters are going to get to decide. If there's a need for public dollars, the voters are going to get to decide whether or not they want to support that. And, and I think they have a right to, to weigh in on that. I think at the end of the day, we also need to talk about like the fact that these big projects drive economic impact and we need that revenue to fill the coffers to be able to spend the money on doing all of the things we've been talking about for the last hour when it comes to basic city services, when it comes to infrastructure, when it comes to funding our, our public safety services and, and everything in between. Those two things have to go hand in hand. And so, and so we have to put wind behind the sails of, of projects like that. When it makes sense. Yeah.
Sorry. Thanks. All right. And Ms. Blueba, you'll answer the next question first. Very simple question. What ideas would each of you bring to the city council for addressing homelessness or houselessness in Kansas City? Ms. Blueba.
Yeah, I mean, I think one of the, you know, houselessness is a complicated problem. And I think we need the smartest people around the table to solve this issue. And a lot of really smart, really experienced folks are doing that work every single day. And a lot of the agencies that I work with through the United Way work right now. We need to bring those organizations around the table. But two of the ways that we, that we can quickly speak to the houselessness problem is by keeping people housed and by building more housing. And getting people off the streets in, in an efficient way and quickly way as possible. So that looks like, you know, easier access to shelters and a variety of different options there. But I also think that we, we as city council shouldn't be making decisions and solutions in a vacuum. We need to be leaning into the experts who work in this space every single day. You know, when we housed people in the convention center in the middle of the winter a couple of years ago, which we should have because we needed to, and it was a dire situation, but we didn't engage the agencies that were working in that space for decades around how we should do it and how we do it successfully in the short term and then in the long term beyond that. So I think we have to, to engage local entities that are working in that space on a regular basis. And, and that runs the breadth of immediate triage need to how do you build housing in a diverse housing inventory so that we can get people into, into spaces who want to be in spaces as quickly as possible? And how do you deal with folks who don't necessarily want to sleep inside, but they also need a safe place to be because being homeless is dangerous?
Thank you, Mr. Short.
So last year, the fall of last year, Kansas City actually spent a great deal of time with the Missouri Coalition to End Homelessness in conjunction with the Houseless Task Force to create a 92-page document called Zero KC. Now, a lot of times we have these great wonderful plans and they sit on a shelf gathering dust. April 4th, there's a 3% sales tax on marijuana. That, a third of that sales tax is going to support parts of this Housing First Plan. Is it a wonderful plan? It's led at the helm by Josh Hinges. Josh Hinges is somebody who came to us from Veterans Community Project. He is kind of the leader of this Housing First Model. The city was a slam dunk when we hired this fellow. So I myself am going to lean into those folks to have, that spent the work on the plan. It's not a six-month plan. It's not a one-year plan. It is a six-year plan to end homelessness in Kansas City. And it can be done. And we can do it with the folks like Josh Hinges and the Missouri Coalition to end homelessness. I think that supporting those plans and holding the council accountable to funding that plan is going to be essential for our next phase of leadership. Again, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. The wheel has already been made. We just need to fund it and keep it rolling.
Thank you, Mr. DiCapo.
Well, when I was, when I was young, we had low-income housing and it was managed by the Housing Authority. And a lot of people that I went to school with at Northeast lived in this low-income in, in these low-income housing projects. And, you know, they were, they were fine people. They just were on the low end. And they worked their way out. But they had a place to start. And I think we need to give them, give people a place to start. And if that takes the city to build low-income housing instead of building a downtown ballpark, I, I vote for low-income housing, keep the ballpark where it is. You know, there's a lot of jobs that the city has that are unfilled. If we get some of these people and get them trained and, and get them into these jobs, and to win-win. They get a job, the city gets someone to, that, to, to fill their jobs. So, I mean, you go down the City Union Mission, I donate stuff there all the time. It's a lot of good people looking for a job. And if they get a job, they're looking for a house. They've got the guy doing the tiny homes over, over in, in Northeast. We need to talk to these fellows. There's a lot of different things we can do. But doing these big reports and like, like Justin said, they sit on a shelf.
Thank you, Ms. Cabrera.
We need to find transformational initiatives. We need to find programs that are building relationships with people. Because ultimately, we have to consider the human factor in all of this. A lot of the people who are homeless are people who have broken their, the relationships with their friends and family and their support system, who have burned bridges due to their behavior or addictions. So we need to find people who are good transforming behavior. There are churches who have ideas for $15,000 container houses. And these things are cost-effective. Sometimes the government just needs to get out of the way and the restrictions that they have so that these programs can be successful or, or take, take off. We need to find these initiatives, find the ones that are the most effective and, and fund them. We have to make sure that we have a place for, for addicts and, and that we have the proper and, and expert advice for all of them. So I'm, I'm all about finding the, the, those groups of people who are already doing it and then just expanding them.
Thank you, Mr. Ray.
You know, as a country, we have made pretty significant progress on addressing homelessness among veterans. And I think we need to bring that to scale when looking at the broader population of folks who experience homelessness. You look at cities like Houston that pioneered a Housing First approach and dramatically reduced chronic homelessness. Kansas City's Plan Zero KC pulls from that Housing First approach. And this is an example where we actually do have a strategy. It's a cohesive, comprehensive strategy. We don't have one on public safety, but we do have one that the city and, and community put a lot of work into. And so we need council folks who are going to see that plan through. Now, one place I would like to take that plan a step further is what I referenced earlier about district families in, in our public school districts. When you have, you know, 1,200 families in KCPS alone who are experiencing high residential mobility, you can imagine the impact that's who are experiencing high residential mobility, you can imagine the impact that's going to have on educational attainment. When you have kids who are, you know, going from a school to school every other month. I would like to see us be intentional about our development projects and what we're going to incentivize and and have developers say, we're going to set a set aside a certain number of units that are going to be specifically dedicated to those families. And those families are going to be provided wraparound services with the full force of what a public school district is able to provide.
Thank you. Going to ask one more question. This is not your closing statement. This is the last question before that. And it'll go first to Mr. Ray. I've asked you eight questions already tonight about yourselves and your priorities and various issues. What question did I not ask that you wish I had asked of you and the other candidates? You can go ahead and answer it too if you want, but you still only get ninety seconds for the question and the answer. We'll start with Mr. Ray.
That's a good question. You know, public safety is is, you know, top of the list. I think we went over that. You actually caught me off guard with that question. I I'm trying to think of what we've all covered. You know, I I think you kind of get at this with what you discuss, you know, about what makes you qualified to to be a city council member. You know, I would like to take a moment and talk about specific experience in addressing issues. And, you know, I have, through my career, especially as a prosecutor, worked hard to work with folks who I don't always agree with. I could tell you there are defense attorneys who represent folks that do awful things that I don't necessarily enjoy being around, but who I have to find a way to work with. And, you know, I think one one question that I would have liked to have heard about is, you know, how do we restore some sense of collegiality amongst our our council members? You know, we kind of got at this with how fractured Kansas City is. But we've allowed a nasty amount of partisan politics into our city politics. And and, you know, we need folks who are going to be able to transcend those things and restore a level of collegiality that we haven't quite had in a while on on our city council.
Thank you. Mr. DiCapo. Well, you're muted, Mr. DiCapo. There you go.
I wish you would have addressed the small business person in Kansas City. You know, ninety percent of all the businesses in Kansas City are small business. And we go out and we court these these big companies, Google, Facebook, and and offer them all kinds of incentives and 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 all they do is bring a hundred people and a bunch of servers. But what about the guy that has a small pizza shop like me? Or what about the guy that has a dry cleaner or a convenience store? You know, it seems, and and I've 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 seen it firsthand that the city does everything in their power to to make it harder for us to make money. And and that that needs to go away. You know, we need to, we need to have people in in city government that want to help the small business person and not hinder us in 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 our growth. And I think that that would have been a good question to ask, Brian. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If it's any consolation, that was the next question if we had more time. Ms. Blueba.
Yeah, I mean, I think one of the things I feel like we we're not talking a lot about right now in any of these forums or really in any conversation, it feels like, is what is our long term plan? Like, how are we planning for the next twenty years comprehensively? And I think when you look at the leadership that was at the table that made our downtown what it is now, those conversations started a decade before before that plan came to fruition. And I think we spend a lot of time right now with leaders that are focused on bright shiny things and short term wins. And I think we have to, we need the bright shiny things, right? I work for the organization who who brought the World Cup here and who's bringing the draft here next month. And we need those things. But, man, we spend a lot of time talking about twenty twenty-six and then sort of stopping the conversation right there. We have to get back to a place where we're talking about long term strategy, long term solutions, while we're doing short term problem solving as well. I'll go back to the walk and chew gum at the same time thing. I think we have to be able to do both. You know, companies don't engage in strategic planning processes and stop the business that they're doing every day. I think we have to be able to do both, and it's important that we're doing that. Both to Crispin's point, I think, in a collaborative way around the city council table and in a way that's engaging the community at a neighborhood level and listening to the people who who make up all of our two hundred and forty plus neighborhoods that we we need to engage more proactively.
Thank you. Mr. Short.
My question would be, how will you hold yourself accountable and how will you be accessible to the citizens? You know, something that the fourth district is not doing right now is fourth district meetings. There are regular meetings in every district of our city except for the fourth district, and it is time to bring those back. You know, in my conversations in Midtown, Old High Park, et cetera, which of course is in Midtown, a lot of people feel like decisions are being made without them or 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 in spite of their opinions and thoughts. It's in time, it's time to bring that community engagement back. Like I said, putting, bringing the twenty-sixth floor of City Hall down to the sidewalk. I'm going to be a full time leader. I'm not going to be splitting my time with other priorities. And I think the fourth district, that large council person, needs to do that, particularly with the massive amount of work that Crispin and Jess have both alluded to that we have to do over the next ten years. We've got a lot of great things coming. We have to have a council that is ready and willing to rise to that occasion. And being fully accessible and fully available is going to inherently lead itself, lend itself, excuse me, to be able to do that more effectively. You know, as recently endorsed by the Citizens Association, which is a group of business leaders and neighborhood activists that are passionate about the community. And these are important, these are important things to have because we need people to engage. We need relationship builders, and we do need to coalesce with our fellow council folks.
Thanks. Ms. Cabrera.
I'm concerned about how we are managing the budget. We are in debt right now. We need to balance the budget to be in better standing. We need to make sure that we are reviewing constantly what programs and departments we have. As if I was a business owner and I had a branch that was failing, I would cut it off. I, we need to make sure that things are being done right and then maybe redirect the resources somewhere else where it does work. So we need to constantly review these things. When we contract someone out to do, to fix a sidewalk or or the road, we need to make sure that we are getting quality work, not just dumping money into it and then three months later, it's messed up again. So things like this are are where taxpayer money is is being wasted. Sometimes we engage in projects that don't work for the people and then we have to take them away. So we're spending money creating them and then taking them away. And this is not, this is not okay. It's the, there is money going into it and it's hard. It it is money that the people are working for and they earned it. So it cannot be misspent. It needs to be spent wisely and responsibly.
Thank you, and thank you all very much for all of your answers this evening. I also want to personally thank all of our participants watching on Zoom right now and who will be watching in the future in the recording of this forum. It's time for our closing remarks. Each of you gets two minutes, two minutes for your closing remarks. We'll continue in the random order. Mr. Short will begin with the two minute closing remarks.
Kansas City voters have some decisions to make. And it it's not going to be easy. There are, what, twelve council seats up plus a mayor? Kansas City is my home. Kansas City is what I'm passionate about. Born and raised in Kansas City, plan on making Kansas City my full time job. I believe that that is one of the reasons why you should stand tall and vote short on April fourth. We have a duty to provide better basic city services, to continue to grow our city, to invest in areas that have been historically de-invested in, and to, again, bring the twenty-sixth floor back down into the sidewalks, into the neighborhoods, into the groups, and do better for our city. I have been campaigning since early twenty twenty-one. And I have met countless of individuals, gone to countless town halls, neighborhood meetings. I attend every city planning commission. I attend all the legislative sessions and business sessions and and committee meetings, whether I'm there in person or online. It's important to continue to learn and grow. And I believe that for the fourth district at large, the choice is clear. We need somebody who has ideas and who has knowledge to back it up. I'm so excited to be running for fourth district at large. I am grateful for the League of Women Voters and all they do throughout certainly Kansas City and the state of Missouri. And for all the folks who are on the call, I appreciate you taking the time to learn a little bit about us. I, you can check out our website, justinshort4kc.com. Send me an email, justinshort4kc@gmail.com if you have any thoughts or concerns. And remember, stand tall, vote short.
Thank you. Next, Grace Cabrera.
I want to see the city prosper. I want to see entrepreneurs and startups have the ability to start without problems, without so much red tape. I want to see people who want to help others be given resources that, like vacant houses, for example, that the government has and not have to go through impossible feats to to get them if they have a good plan in place. I want to make sure that your your streets are safe, that they are clean, that they are drivable, that you can walk on sidewalks without tripping over them. I want to make sure that the city is doing its job and what you are paying them to do. If you want to hear more from about me and my ideas, please go to gracecabrera.com. All my information is there. I welcome the feedback. I want to go to the communities for solutions because a lot of times you have the answer for the problems you're having as well. Thank you so much for having us. It's been a pleasure. And vote for me, Grace Cabrera, April fourth.
Thank you. And Ms. Cabrera, I believe we actually shorted you thirty seconds there on the timer. So did you, if you'd like thirty more seconds, you could take them, but you did.
It's all right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Remember, we have two minutes for our closing statements. Next is Crispin Ray.
Thank you, Brian. I think it's very important that we are here with League Women Voters on International Women's Day. You know, I, a while back, I read a really good book called Invisible Women by Carolyn Creado. And she looked at the gender bias gap and how that, you know, biased ways of of gathering data influences policy decisions that local governments and city governments and many other spheres base their decisions on and and how you have policies down to to snow removal. And, you know, how how this gender bias gap can negatively impact how services are provided to women. You know, and so as we look at how we address the problems of this city, we have to make sure we address things like that. We have to make sure women have a voice, that women are supported, that women are put in leadership positions. That's certainly something that's very important to me. I'm a proud recipient of a Good Guy Award from the Greater Kansas City Political Women's Caucus for supporting women candidates and and women elected officials. And that's going to continue far past the election for me. I am in the Special Victims Unit where we fight, unfortunately, for a majority of our victims who are women and experience traumatic events of violence that happened to them. I'm in a unit of ten attorneys. I'm the only male surrounded by very powerful, strong women attorneys that do incredible work. And that's the approach that I'm going to bring. I want to bring all of my experience to the table and my lived experience, my professional experience, my educational experience to address the serious challenges we face as a city. We have an incredible opportunity in front of us. This can be Kansas City's decade. But there are serious challenges that are standing in our way, and we need folks with experience who can address those challenges so that we can have the safe and clean city that we all deserve. I appreciate you all this evening. Crispin Ray, Fourth District at Large.
Thank you. Jess Blueba.
Yeah, thanks, Brian. So I think all of you probably heard us speak on these issues. And and, you know, we say things that are roughly very pretty similar on a lot of things. So I think when you dig into really what differentiates the five of us from each other, it comes down to what stands out. And for me, it's values and experience. I am the daughter of two social workers, the granddaughter of a farmer on one side and the granddaughter of a of a small business owner on the other. And those things instilled in me values of of the understanding the value of hard work, understanding the value of if you're going to do something, do it right. And I think most importantly, understanding the value of valuing yourself or your your community more than you value yourself and working on behalf of your community. I think those values, combined with the fact that I have experienced twenty years of bringing disparate groups of people together, working towards common goals and common consensus and moving forward in action. That combined with the fact that we need a different style of leadership in City Hall. We need di- different non-traditional, non-establishment approaches to how we are solving our biggest, most complicated solutions. And we need leaders who are going to come to the table willing to listen, willing to gather folks in in difference, but also in building consensus and collaboration. It might might not mean we're all going to agree all the time, but we got to work together to do that. And I think that 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 at the end of the day means we have to be willing to look to the left and look to the right and say, maybe I don't know everything, so I'm going to bring the people around the table who do. I will agree with Mr. Ray in the sense that it is important that we put women in positions of power. And I think that's why I would ask for your vote on April fourth, April fourth. Vote yes for Jess. Thank you for your time tonight. Thank you for having me, and I look forward to feeling your support on fourth, on April fourth.
And thank you. And finally, John DiCapo.
Well, I want to thank the the League of Women Voters on International Women's Day for allowing a local guy, small businessman into this discussion and, you know, into this race. You know, I'm not a politician and not a lawyer, not on any boards. Done a lot of charity work, but, you know, I I'm just just a guy that wants to further Kansas City and make Kansas City a better place to live for the people of Kansas City. You know, I think there's mismanagement at City Hall. As Grace said, we're underwater. And as a small businessman that pays his taxes, pays his people, pays his rent, and still has a little money left over. You know, I think you need business people in City Hall that that know how to balance a budget, not just throw money around. And I'm that guy. I I'm the guy that's going to answer the telephone when you call. And when you need something, I'm the guy that's going to get it done for you. So I appreciate the League of Women Voters and appreciate you, Brian. And I wanted everybody to know that I'd I'd be a great city councilman for you. And I hope you vote for me, John DiCapo, kcfordicapo.com. Thank you.
Thank you, John, and thanks again to all of the candidates, to Jess Blueba and Crispin Ray and Grace Cabrera and Justin Short and John DiCapo. I'm grateful for each of you participating tonight, and it's been my pleasure and privilege to moderate tonight's discussion. Thank you so much for for having me. And I'll turn it back over to Anitra Steele from the League of Women Voters.
Well, thank you very much, Brian. And thank you, audience, for your thoughts, provoking questions, and your interest in the April fourth primary election. And we also want to thank Brian. A recording this forum will be available on the League's website, l w v k c dot org. So candidates, you can clue your mother in law in on where she can watch you, make her proud. And and then we'd like you to please take a moment to share your candidate forums via your Facebook page, Nextdoor, and other favorite social media channels. And remember, for complete voting and candidate information, visit l w v k c dot org and vote four one one, which will go live next Monday, March thirteenth. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for being here and good night.
Thank you. Good night.
Much. Good night.
Joe.